Thank you. Welcome to the February 2025 Meeting of Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King, Chair. If everyone will please join me in a pledge before we get underway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Everyone, please also join me at this moment. Silence those electronics for the duration of the hearing. And Commissioners, if you would please join me in welcoming Rob Gwynn to our midst. Gwynn is stepping into the seat that was vacated by Ben Winters and will be our new Commissioner here. So, Mr. Gwynn, thank you for your volunteerism and your participation in the public process. We appreciate you being here. We're going to start with approval of minutes. Does everybody get a copy of the minutes? If you did, I'm hearing chatter there, here and there, that that is so. Need to go ahead and get a motion on the floor. Mr. Hampton, thank you. Do we have any edits, corrections, updates? Mr. Marsh, was that you?
I said second.
A second, okay. Any additional? Mr. Finney.
Well, let me find it, I'm sorry. Page seven of 22. Bullet point three, questioning the applicant representing support of application of the commission. It said, Commissioner Finney asked, "Has the construction started?" And Mr. Oakley replied, "No." My question was, "Has the construction started on the previous..." Part of... There was two... There was two parts to this question, and this makes this ambiguous, which brings up my question. This was... In the past, we had a parcel approved for construction on the other acreage, and this acreage plot was being moved. And my question, what has construction started on the previous acreage that was approved? And that was not in there. In other words, the...
All right. Mr. Fisher, can we add that clarification to the question?
I mean, do we just want to put on there, "Has the construction started on the previously approved parcel?"
Acreage?
Yes, because this was being moved from one place to the other. And that is not clear in that question.
Okay. So, we'll just add on the previously approved parcel?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Finney?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move for voice, or we'll vote by voice vote. All approved of the minutes is corrected. Please signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign, and the minutes are approved. All right. Point of order, Mr. Counsel. We move into the first docket item. It is currently on the table. Do we need to remove it from the table before we read into the docket?
Probably be appropriate to have a motion to remove it from the table.
Floor is open for...
Mr. Chairman. Mm-hmm. I move that we remove docket PZ-25-006 from the table.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, and PZ-25-006 has been removed from the table. Ms. Edgar, can you read this one into the docket, please?
Docket PZ-25-006. Oh, okay. Application has been filed by Alyssa and William Winthrow for a waiver of Oldham County Subdivision Regulation Section 5.7E, joint access, fourth parcel on access easement, and a waiver of access easement width for a proposed minor plat 10801 Little Pond Road, Goshen. The property is 3.79 acres and zoned R1 residential.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. Ms. Barge, before we get underway, we're going to get staff sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good morning.
All right, Ms. Barge, you'll have the staff presentation.
Good morning, Anna Barge, Senior Planner. Today, we're here for the access easement waivers for Alyssa, and I hope I'm saying your wife's name right. Okay, Alyssa and William Winthrow, 10801 Little Pond Road in Goshen. So, this is a proposal that Ms. Edgar just read. Their zoning is R1, and the land use is residential, and it's 3.79 acres. There's no site history for this parcel. The agenda was posted to the county website on January 30th, and adjoining property owner notices were mailed out on February 6th, and the public noticed when the Oldham era on February 13th. So, this is the parcel in question, which is at the end of Little Pond Road. So, the applicant is proposing to create a minor plat that will create a new 1.1 acre tract and a residual 2.62 acre parcel. Section 5.7 of the subdivision regulation states that no more than three parcels may take access from any single street encroachment not considered front-end street or private driveway. So, this is like an access easement. And splitting the lots to access easement would now have four parcels that take access from it, which is why they're asking for a waiver today. And splitting the lots to act... That's just... Sorry, that's what I said. Okay. So, the applicant is requesting a waiver of that subdivision regulation, Section 5.7E, for the approval of a fourth parcel on an access easement. Additionally, they have a section of their access easement that is not the full 40 feet width, which is what's required in subdivision regulation, Section 7.1. And the narrowest part is 30 feet. And so, they're having to ask for a waiver of Section 7.1 of the access easement. So, the applicant will prepare a minor plat and a shared road maintenance agreement between all parties involved. So, this is the Section 050-010 of R1, just all the regulations for the R1 zoning. And this is the regulations for a waiver, the first waiver, which is the access easement, the joint access on the access easement. And then, the waiver two is for Section 7.1 of the subdivision regulations, the waiver of the 40 feet width, because they do have a portion that is less than that 40 feet. So, this is a little bit hard to see, but I'm going to use this mouse. This section of the access easement width is 51.54 feet, and then the section's 43 and something. And then, you'll see over here that this is the 30-foot portion, and that's what they're asking to waive. So, on the new minor plat, the new proposed track, all of that is at least 40 feet wide. And then, on the neighbor's, the residual tract, it is as well. It's just coming in from Little Pond Road is where some of it is not that full 40 feet wide. So, here's just zoomed in a little bit more, so you can see. Here's the 30-feet portion, the 43 and change, and the 51 and change portion. So, this is just a site photo, you know, that was taken of where the area, the new lot will be. In summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of, for the first waiver, of the subdivision regulation, Section 5.7E, for the approval of a fourth parcel on an access easement. For this waiver, the potential conditions of approval is the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 25th Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. Secondly, a minor plat application and survey must be submitted for staff review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. And third, a shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat. So, the second request is the waiver of the access easement width. So, the requirement that we have for the access easement width is 40 feet. They're requesting at their narrowest part, keep in mind, some of it is larger than 40 feet, so at the narrowest, it is 30 feet. So, the difference in access easement width is 10 feet. Potential conditions of approval for this one is the same as before on the first one. The waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 25th, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. And the same thing, a minor plat and survey must be submitted for staff review prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Thank you, Ms. Barge. Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, and we did not receive any public comments for or against this.
Thank you. Anything additional from staff? All right, Commissioners, questions of staff? Mr. Douglas.
This might be a legal question, but... Sorry.
I know.
Technically, the existing easement is 30 feet, correct?
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
The existing, right away, or I should say, the easement currently coming into that property on Little Pond Road is 30 feet, correct? That was the existing... Sometime down the road was 30 feet, I guess. Our statutes were. But the new road that he's going to put in to connect to that 30 feet is at 40 feet or above, correct?
The part through, yeah, through the new tract is going to be 40 feet or above, but the part through the other tract...
So, why do we need a waiver if the existing property that he's going to subdivide to connect to an existing 30 feet that was already pre-approved?
So, it may have been a, what we call, legal non-conforming law, and so now that we're making changes, we need to make sure that we, like, check all the boxes and dot our i's and cross our t's, would be what I would assume.
She gave you an answer? That's the right answer?
I guess.
Yeah, anytime you change something on a legal non-conforming, you have to make it conform, so.
Yeah, and it's just to clean it up. I mean, if you remember this one, when it came last month, this was, that was the part that we didn't include and didn't notice, so that's why we're back this month.
Right.
And it's just to clean it up and understand that when this new lot is created, they did obtain a waiver for that existing access that goes into that lot. Makes it a little cleaner down the road.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional? All right, anyone else? Mr. Marsh?
Could you pull the map up again, please?
Yes. Do you want the more zoomed-in one?
The one there, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, so the new tract is exactly where? It's in the back?
This, it's this one.
In the front.
Yes.
Okay, so the drawing where you have the buildings?
Mm-hmm.
What is the second building? You've got a existing building?
You'll have to ask the applicant when he comes up. I do not know.
Okay, excellent, got it, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, further questions? Further questions for staff? All right, thank you, Ms. Barge.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we'll move into presentation from applicant. Let's get your name and address, we'll get you sworn in.
William Aaron Winthrow. Address is 10801 Little Pond Road, Goshen, Kentucky, 40026.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, sir, floor is yours.
To address the question posed, there is not a second structure. What I'm deciphering is the one that attaches to the dashed driveway includes porches, and then, the one pulled off is without porches and rotated for some reason.
All right. Do you have anything else to add to what Ms. Barge presented?
I do not. You did such an exceptional job.
All right. If you'll give me just a second here, if you have nothing to add. Is anyone here willing, wishing to speak on behalf of this application, in support of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? All right, Commissioners, we're going to dispense with rebuttal and finals, but we do have an opportunity for questions for the applicant from you. Questions for the applicant. Mr. Finney.
The Little Pond Road, whose property is that actually on?
Our immediate neighbor, Joe Finley.
Should he be here since we're actually getting a waiver or something like this involves his property?
Well, he got noticed, Mr. Finney. He was noticed, I mean, that's his...
His priority.
Yeah, I mean, if he had something to say about it, he had the opportunity to come and tell you what his concerns were.
Okay, thank you.
Is it fair to also add that he will also necessarily be party to the maintenance agreement on this particular access? Mr. Baxter?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I have had conversation with all adjoining neighbors.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, further questions?
Jim, I don't know if you want to address how much of Little Pond Road is county-maintained? I don't know if that matters in this instance, but I know there's a small portion of it that, or maybe not, maybe I dreamed that.
No, and I wasn't prepared for this, but if I recall from our last scheduled hearing, just the very beginning portion, right there at Taylor Place, Old Taylor Place subdivision, there's a short portion that's maintained by the county, but not the road in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Silliman. Commissioners?
One thing.
Mr. Baxter, please.
Mr. Winthrow, I think you told us last month, and I want to make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you don't live in the subdivision. This property is outside and adjoins the subdivision, right?
That's correct. The three parcels on Little Pond are not within the subdivision bounds.
When you say the subdivision, you're referring to Old Taylor Place?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Further questions, Commissioners? Further questions? Ms. Davis?
Are there any homes, existing homes, on the other side that's already there?
On the new proposed parcel?
No, the other part, that's beyond it. When you drive to where you're going to, the new one, is there anything on the back one?
There is a home on the residual lot, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's currently our personal residence.
Further questions? All right, guys, this will then close the public testimony portion of this hearing without rebuttal. We're not doing cross-examination and rebuttal or without other testimony. We're not doing cross-exam and rebuttal. We will move into motion-making. Mr. Fisher?
All right, so we've got two waivers before you. The first waiver we're going to look at is the waiver of the fourth parcel access. On page two of your staff report, you do have suggested motions to approve or deny the waiver. And then, the potential conditions of approval on that are the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 25th, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing, and a minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
And one more, sorry, next page. Shared road maintenance agreement shall be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat.
Yes, thank you. All right, Commissioners, questions? If none, floor is open for a motion on the waiver, fourth parcel access. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Chairman, reference to docket PZ-25-006. I make a motion that we approve a waiver of Section 5.7 of the subdivision regulation that this motion in strict compliance will create undue hardship because of the exceptional, unique topography of the existing 30-foot easement that's going there, but on the property itself, there are three parcels, and then, he's creating a fourth parcel. I don't see any undue hardship or any detriment to the public good at this time, and it doesn't create any impairment of the purposes and basis, objectives, intent of the subdivision regulations. And that the potential conditions of approval, the waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the February 25th, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing, and a minor plat application survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. And also, the applicant must provide a shared road maintenance agreement, be prepared and agreed upon by all parties affected and recorded with the minor plat.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Douglas, you said potential condition, you're incorporating the potential conditions of approval in your motion.
Correct, incorporating.
So, they're going to be the conditions of approval?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Then we have a good motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We have a motion on the floor, second.
Second.
Mr. Marsh, thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into roll call vote.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Gwynn?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Ms. Walser?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the motion to approve the waiver for fourth parcel access has been approved. Motion or vote of 11 to 0. Next up, Mr. Fisher.
All right, next one is the waiver of the access easement width. That requirement is 40 feet. They are requesting a small portion of that access easement be the existing 30 feet, just to clean up that language. And then, the difference in that access easement width would be a 10-foot request. You, on page three of your staff packet, you do have motions to both approve or deny that waiver with the potential conditions of approval, which will, in your motion, become your conditions of approval. Be the waiver only applies to the plan reviewed at the February 25th, 2025 Planning Commission public hearing, and a minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, Commissioners, questions? If none, floor is open for a motion on waiver of access easement width.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Marsh?
Quick question. If this is denied, even though the applicant is going to meet the criteria and his property under his control, does this stop this from moving forward, or does that remain grandfathered at the 30 that it is currently at?
Continuation of Mr. Douglas's question.
Well, I think the idea here is whenever you come in and you're making a request for anything, and you've got an opportunity to correct a problem, which, I don't know what the regulations were when this road was first established. I don't know if it should have been 40 feet, and we only did 30. I haven't looked back. I mean, I don't have any idea, but, I mean, the regulations now require that you have a 40-foot access easement. So, the idea is so that everything is quote-unquote "legal," we're going to get that straightened out.
We're going to document that. Okay, perfect, excellent, thank you, sir. All right, we're good. Further questions? If none, we'll move into roll call vote. Oh, beg your pardon. Floor is still open for a motion. Ms. Kraus?
Regarding docket PZ 25 006, I move that we approve the waiver because the design innovations in this case are in alignment with the current road. And I see no detriment to public good or community. This waiver shall only apply to the plan reviewed today, February 25, 2025, at the Planning Commission public hearing. And a minor plat application and survey must be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Mr. Baxter?
We have an adequate motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Falvey, thank you. All right, discussion? Okay, Mr. Douglas.
Sorry. I think one of the conditions of approval should be that the new access easement he's building is building within the confines of the 40 feet. He's only attaching to the conditions of the waiver of to the 30 feet. So as we're approving this, it almost sounds like we're giving him a waiver to build a new road to the new lot in 30 feet because we're giving him a waiver of 10 feet, the way this sounds. On track. 3A or 3B or whatever it is. That's what it sounds like to me. So I think there needs to be something in the condition of approval.
Not sure I understand.
I don't either.
Well, we're asking, usually when we give a waiver to someone to build something, we're asking them to build a waiver. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I follow what you're saying. So he's basically saying, can we in the motion, or at least I think that's what you're saying, is if you look at the mouse here, approve the waiver up to this new tract? Is that what you're saying? So not not approving the waiver for the full for the full because it's it meets the standards past this black line right here, this vertical line, but just doing the waiver for this portion? If you can say that in the motion, I don't know.
My understanding is that he's probably going to connect to the road that's on his property, which is 30 feet. So this waiver sounds like we're giving him permission to go ahead and.
Do 30 for the whole.
30 feet for the whole thing.
Right.
That's my legal question I asked before.
Yes.
But maybe I didn't explain it until.
I I'm following him.
So.
As the plan as presented on on the proposed lot, does it have a 40-foot width?
Yes, it has at least 40 foot. So that's 43.82 here and 51.54. So yeah, like you said, if we use the plan presented today, then they would have to follow that first condition of approval. Is the plan presented today, the plan presented today is that it's 30 feet wide from here to here and 43.82 here and 51. So it meets. So we're not giving them approval of the whole thing on the plan presented today. We're only giving it on where they put it. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
For future reference.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, just making sure I'm speaking the same language.
Mr. Baxter, did you have something?
I now I understand, but what are you asking them to? I just want to make sure that if he decides not to build something and then somebody comes in and says, oh, I got a waiver to build a 30-foot easement. Even though it's proposed, because we're I don't know.
Right.
Because he's come in and asked for a waiver for, and I'm not.
He's asked for a waiver to access on the first motion for a waiver for a fourth parcel access, correct? And that fourth par- parcel is 3B. So even though testimony has been given that he's going to build a 40-foot easement in there, but we're giving a waiver to attach that 40-foot easement to the 30-foot easement. But
Right.
I just didn't know if that should be explained, even though.
Right, so.
I don't know. I technically.
I understand. I think like Anna said, the plans presented at today's hearing covers, but then also the minor plat application process, once they go to apply for the minor plat to get this plat approved, we're going to make sure that that's 40 feet all the way up to that. And if it doesn't comply with the regulations, then that's when we would tell them, hey, this doesn't comply, you've got to go for a waiver. So I think both of the conditions will cover that.
Okay.
No, not a new waiver. He didn't mean to say that. I think some of y'all got confused on his misspeaking. He said, if that doesn't comply, then you have to go back and fix it to comply with the existing waiver that they assuming they get approved for this next one.
Meaning if they were to put in the minor plat for approval from staff and it said 30 feet on that new proposed parcel, we would say you can't get that unless you go for a waiver.
Yeah.
So that's what that would that would mean.
Or fixing it to conform to what it was today. So you would have, if he made any changes, he would have to come back to Planning Commission. So it makes sense.
But the waiver is dedicated, not built. The driveway is what's built. So they're dedicating a waiver for, or excuse me, an easement for for a 40-foot easement for a driveway that is already constructed. Right? It's already in place. Yes, it is. They're coming across an existing driveway that's being used to access. Right?
Well, yes, it is, because his house is at 10801. Right, and the driveway is right there. Okay, so that's a 30-foot easement that's already in existence, correct? I don't know what.
They're proposing a 40-foot. What brings it to the property is a 30-foot easement, but that that's probably a 12-foot or so driveway.
Our legal counsel has already made.
So what's what's going to what's going to show up on the plat? Is going to be from here to where the new property line is, is going to be 40 feet. That part, right?
At least at least 40.
But the existing driveway where it says Little Pond Road is what the waiver applies to. We're allowing a 30-foot access, existing access to the fourth proposed parcel, which is non-conformal.
Yeah, and so it's the the easement is a little bit different than a driveway because the driveway is only so wide.
Correct.
And the easement's wider than the driveway.
Okay.
In case.
I'm satisfied. He's.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure it made sense.
I just want it on record in case somebody comes in.
Yeah, sure.
I got a waiver to build a 30-foot.
And we have the checks and balances.
I thought he was going to be out of here at like 9:10. Managed to turn this into.
All right, Mr. Douglas, you good?
I'm good.
All right, any further questions, discussion? All right, you guys good if we go ahead and call for the question? All right, let's go. Ms. Edgar.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Walser?
Yes.
Ms. Nassar?
Yes.
Mr. Gwynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
That was a yes.
Okay. Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and the access easement waiver has been approved on a vote of 11 to zero. All right.
I'm I'm sure.
Okay. All right, and now we're moving into docket PZ dash 25 dash 007. Ms. Edgar, can you read the docket into the or the?
Do you need a table? This one again?
Only if we removed it from the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's. So I think 006 was already on the table, so I don't think we have to do anything with that.
It remains there.
It means 004.
25 dash 004 remains on the table.
Sorry.
Okay? So docket for 25 dash 007.
Docket PZ dash 25 dash 007, application has been filed by I cannot pronounce the name, I'm sorry. VJ Adala, thank you. For a commercial development plan for the Griffin or Griffith Event Center located across from 1020 DW Griffin Lane, LaGrange. The property is 7.003 acres and zoned IPD Industrial Park District.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar, and Ms. Barge, you'll have staff's presentation.
Yes, Anna Barge, Senior Planner again. I have a hard time saying Griffith. Even though I grew up watching Andy Griffith Show, it's still hard for me to like actually say that word sometimes. Anyway, yeah, this property is located on the corner of DW Griffith and Commerce Parkway. If y'all know where the Drive-In Movie Theater is, that's what DW Griffith is on. So the zoning for this site is IPD, which is Industrial Park District. It's currently undeveloped, and the acreage is approximately 7.033 acres. So their pre-application meeting was back in August on the 28th, and their TRC hearing was November 20th. And the agenda was posted on the website on January 30th with the adjoining property owner notices mailed on February 6th and the public notice appearing in the Oldham era on February 13th. So a minor plat was approved to create this lot in 2022. So you'll see when I get to our map, it's, we kind of had to carve it out because we don't have it on our GIS yet. So this is the site plan that they submitted. They've already gone through TRC, so this is their final plan. And this is the event center right here with some parking. And this is Commerce Parkway down here and DW Griffith to orient you. And the drive-in is back here, and these businesses are over here across the street. So here's a little tiny bit more zoomed in. So this is our GIS manager kind of carved that in because we don't currently have it on our GIS. So you can see the Drive-In Movie Theater back here, and this is where the event center, if approved, will go. And then this is the IPD zoning. You'll see there's, it's really all IPD around here except for conservation zoning down at the interstate. So conformance with the comprehensive plan, the Oldham County Future Land Use Map predicts that this, the use of this land will be industrial. The proposed plan meets all standards in the Oldham County zoning ordinance. I included the meeting minutes from TRC for all the TRC comments in your packet. So the applicant has submitted a proposed development plan for an event center in the Industrial Park District zoning. The primary purpose of this site will be for weddings, although they can use this for other events. Event venues are permitted or a permitted use in IPD zoning. That means they do not need to get a conditional use permit. This is just standard allowed on the allowed list like everything else that's allowed in IPD zoning. So the building will be 22,400 square feet and will utilize existing utilities on the site. There is a blue line stream, a blue line stream on the property, but that will remain undisturbed. The development plan follows IPD, all IPD requirements, does not ask for any waivers or variances. In summary, the applicant is requesting approval of the development plan of the Griffith Event Center on 7.033 acres. Please note that I did include the traffic study. I hope y'all have had time to just at least skim it before coming today. But that was included in your packet along with the TRC notes. So the proposed binding elements, the approval applies only to the plan presented at today's February 25, 2025 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There shall be no changes to the plan without review of the Oldham County Planning Commission and the Engineers' Office. The plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at time of the construction plan approval. So that concludes the staff report.
Mr. Silliman, do you have something to add?
Yes, please. Good morning. I'm going to scroll back to the plan. Okay. So as typical with a development of this site, it does disturb more than an acre of land. So we would require the applicants apply for a stormwater quality management and erosion control permit through the county. That will involve them providing the construction plan documents for our review. Those documents will include calculations for the stormwater detention to ensure the post-construction runoff does not exceed the pre-construction runoff for the established rain events that we utilize in our ordinance in addition to the water quality requirements. And their engineer is showing a proposed detention basin there at the south portion of the property near Commerce Parkway. So they are aware of this requirement and will adhere to it. Additionally, since it's greater than an acre of land disturbance, the applicants will have to file for or apply for a KYR 10 permit from the Kentucky Division of Water. The Anna mentioned the the blue line stream on the east, on the east side of the property here. It, I agree, it doesn't appear based on this development that the plan that they would be impacting it. However, if during construction plan review or construction, it was determined that there is some impact of those stream, that stream, we would require coordination or permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers or Kentucky Division of Water for that also. It's not apparent on the plan, but I think we discussed this with the the property owner, and we'll just have I want to, I guess, make it on record, as Mr. Douglas would say, that we would require the curbing around the parking lot. That's one of the Oldham County subdivision regulations, and it has to do with capturing runoff and guiding it correctly to the stormwater basin. So that will be reviewed during construction plan review. The other item we review, and Ms. Barge said she provided the traffic impact study to you. If you read the traffic impact study, it mentions that the volume warrants do warrant a left turn lane on Commerce Parkway. However, the level of service would still be appropriate. We do observe an impact to that traffic. And our concern is that for an event, if you had a large event at this space, a significant number of vehicles coming from 393 at exit 18 coming in and now require left turn at a given time for a wedding or whatever event. So that would be the need for the left turn lane. Oldham County is currently having a consultant provide or conduct a traffic study for Commerce Parkway. We're probably halfway through that study. Data's been collected, and the consultant's working on analysis of that data. And the intent is to to better understand and guide us for future improvements of Commerce Parkway, whether it's widening and adding a center turn lane or adding turn lanes at intersections. So understanding we have the potential to improve Commerce Parkway, you'll, you could remember with Independence Village Apartments, that's currently under construction. We didn't require they build the turn lane for the same reason we had them, or they agreed to contribute money in escrow for future improvements. So my proposal for this would be the same, is that instead of having the applicant build a turn lane that might not be in conjunction or adherence with what we want to do ultimately in the future with Commerce Parkway, that they provide a contribution towards future improvements. Again, with with Independence Village, they provided $75,000, which is, that was in the City of LaGrange. So that went towards the City of LaGrange for future use. Recently, you heard and approved a development reserves of Paramount. And for traffic impacts at Lock Lane, they provided $50,000 to the county for future improvements. Based on some just very cursory calculations I did on the the area of that turn lane and the other construction that would be involved, including the, it would require relocating the existing multi-use trail. I I figured the cost would be probably maybe around $50,000. So I think the applicant will speak, will will speak to what their agreement is regarding that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Silliman. All right, anything else from staff? All right, Commissioners, questions for staff? Questions for staff? Mr. Falvey?
Mr. Silliman. The site that we're talking about with the turn lane, does the drive?
The site that we're talking about with the turn lane, does the uh, drive uh, um, the drive-in theater property, have you spoken to them about contribution because they'd...
Well, we, we've coordinated with them and the, the applicant's engineer, applicant's engineer has also just to better understand uh, the impact they have on uh, the traffic there. Um, they do have on occasion uh, events that result in some traffic backups. Uh, I've observed one. Um, I think, uh, you know, it, theirs really depends on the popularity of the movie, the time, uh, because some of their, in the summer, their movies are very late because they can't start until it's dark, so their effect on the actual peak hour. But to answer your question specifically, um, we couldn't go back to them and ask them to contribute because they're already constructed. There's, uh, that, that's something we've observed in the county and other locations on Commerce Parkway that um, once they're built, they're built.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything additional? All right, seeing none, we'll move into presentation from applicant.
Thank you.
And we'd like to get your team sworn before you get underway, please.
That'd be great.
Based on the testimony, just stand up and swear.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name's Kyle Galloway, 9625 Ornsby Station Road, Louisville, Kentucky. I'm the attorney uh, for Vijay and Lakshmi Adala, um, which is uh, Lakshmi is a owner of uh, Bluegrass Rentals and uh, uh, well formerly Bluegrass Rentals is a party planning event uh, company now and she handles and has over 10 years' experience in the, the wedding industry. And her hope and dream for the site is to develop a uh, location that can stay.
I'm going to need you to get a little closer to that mic so we can...
You guys not able to hear, I'm like, I'm worried I'm going to touch it with my lips, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is this better? Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds better. Um, the, uh, her hope and dream is to create a venue where she can, you know, bring these events uh, for people, uh, for weddings and as well as some corporate events during the day um, to the site, so uh, that is her hope and focus on this uh, on this event. Um, I'll run through the slides and then we'll kind of, I don't want to duplicate too much of the staff report, but I do just kind of want to discuss a few things. Let's see if I can do it this way. Yes, perfect. Okay, as you can see, there's the site in question, uh, recently subdivided in 2022. You can see that the uh, I'll move the cursor up, but you can see the, the drive-in uh, right past the site. Um, and then you can see other businesses here and then this is a remaining large parcel here that will also, you know, be served off of this roadway. And most of this at this time is obviously undeveloped. Um, as mentioned, it's, it does comply with current zoning. We're not here for a zone change, we're not here for waivers or variances. Uh, the current site is, allows events, it's a, you know, that's the zoning for it. It's seven acres, about a 22,400 square foot event center. Uh, we have it, we will create 2.62 acres of impervious area, but as discussed by the engineer, there will be detention provided and that will be, you know, monitored appropriately through Kentucky Department of Water as well as through Oldham County. We have utilities to the site already. Uh, we have 184 parking spaces provided with 180 required. It was mentioned, uh, and I'll get to that on the site plan, but we will do plan to curb the whole parking area that was mentioned. Uh, here's just a, an initial view of the site kind of as current. Obviously, this is not this month, um, this is a much prettier spring picture. Um, and then here's the site plan itself. So we've got the proposed detention. Uh, again, we stay pretty far away from that stream and of course will comply with all, you know, non-disturbance requirements that the county or the state or the Army Corps, hopefully not the Army Corps. Um, if, but uh, you know, we'll comply with all those requirements. Uh, we mentioned the curb parking here, we've got the two ingress and egresses here. Um, and uh, then I showed a, a kind of a picture, a nice picture of the front of the building as proposed. Uh, Commerce Parkway, just where it is out here, so we're right along there. And then the um, cul-de-sac ends here with the movie theater over in the bottom left-hand corner. This is just a generic layout of how we conceptualize the interior. Again, just really for information for everyone, you'll have the, the, the nice entryway with a covered porch, so if it's raining, the bride or groom don't get soaked. Um, bath and dressing areas, a hallway, you know, an event space and a, and a, and a shared kitchen with some storage in the back. Um, here's a few more location pictures, again, looking at the site from Commerce Parkway to be over, I think on this side. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the traffic today. I have here with me Chris Crumpton with Bluestone Engineers and I also have Diane Zimmerman, who uh, did the traffic study. They're, they're both uh, experts in this area and they're willing to talk about this. Uh, in general, the Commerce Parkway, which is a collective with 11-foot lanes, uh, we use the Friday afternoon peak for the higher volumes, um, the peak hour trips for the event center are about 150. Um, and then as discussed, we do, you know, the study did show that a left turn lane is, is warranted. And we can get more into details there. Um, that's back to, I'm going to leave it on this nice picture. What I wanted to do is um, discuss a little bit about the contribution uh, to the roadway. I'm going to go backwards here for a second. And this, I think, is a helpful site. So, you know, there are some other larger amounts mentioned as far as the cost of the um, uh, contribution to the left turn lane and my client is willing to make a contribution that's equitable. The existing movement, driver, uh, drive-in movie theater, I don't think is going to be subject to the, being required to because it's a pre-existing site. Uh, I could be wrong, um, but uh, so here's our site and then there's this much larger acreage behind us, which we assume will also have traffic impact requiring, you know, and using that left turn lane as well as some of these undeveloped sites over here. So we were uh, proposing a contribution somewhere around the $20,000 range, which we think is, is uh, a little less than half of the total turn lane. And we think some of those larger costs, and we can get into more detail on that, um, are, would it be included in the already anticipated widening? Um, so if you already included just the base asphalt, and I'll have Chris and Diane discuss this more, um, you know, we think uh, that would more than cover and be a fair contribution because when we have, you have future development here, they can also contribute accordingly. So, Chris, did you want to talk anymore about that? Or Diane? No. I think they'll just answer any questions you have about that. Um, I'm open for questions as well. I also have Vijay and Lakshmi here. Um, they're here also willing to answer any questions, but uh, we don't want to take up extra time if we don't need to.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. So, anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with questions of this application? All right, seeing none, we'll move into questions from the commission. Commissioners, what are your questions? Mr. Falvey.
Is it only for wedding events or do you have planned, what other type of events?
Uh, my understanding is wedding events, maybe corporate retreats. Anything else? Oh, she'll come up and let you know.
Okay.
She loves to talk about this. You gotta like, almost touch the mic.
Yeah, move that down where you can reach it. Let's get your name and address for the record first. Name and address for the record, then we'll get you sworn in, okay?
This is Lakshmi Adala. Um, I'm into event business and mostly this...
Address?
Oh, of my home. 9315 Rascot Court, Prospect, Kentucky, 40059.
Okay, one second. Has she? Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
So I'm into event business and like, uh, mostly this will be into weddings and corporate events and like, people like the place.
Come closer to that mic, please.
Uh, if people like the place, we will accommodate for the birthday parties or Christmas parties, anything else like wedding shows, so that we want more people to get involved because Commerce Parkway is growing and we want others to take part of it, like if we have any, like here we have the city center, if this is booked, we can accommodate city events also in future, so that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Falvey, anything additional? All right, other questions? Mr. Douglas?
This might be a question for both staff and you, uh, the attorney.
Maybe the engineers, who knows?
Maybe engineers. If there's a conflict between the agreeable donation or not, contribution to the future of a left turn lane being warranted, apparently we have a disagreement between numbers.
Correct.
Hasn't been worked out before it's come to the planning commission, correct?
That's right.
So are you leaving it up to the planning commission to make that determination for you?
Uh, we'd be open to finding a solution here or we could also have a certain period after hopeful approval to work it out with staff.
Is, Mr. Solma? What is customarily our policy when it comes to when a traffic study's been done, that it shows an existing, there being an impact to the existing highway?
Well, again, this is a unique situation because if, if there was an impact and the left turns required and we didn't have plans to do any more work there, we would require a improvement to the roadway. Um, in this case, though, we recognize that it's, it's really not reasonable to ask them to build a turn lane if, if it doesn't uh, match what we want to do in the ultimate future and then we've got to rip it out and that's just money wasted. So we're trying to say, okay, in, instead of that, let's just use the contribution at a later date, again, like was done in, in other locations.
Was, and I'll ask Ms. Zimmerman this, but was her analysis justifying a warranting of a left turn lane based on the event being built with the capacity of that, based on that? Not for the future, it was based on for 2025, correct? I mean, I, I, I'm not asking you to answer, Ms. Zimmerman, but is that how the study reviewed?
That's how I understood it and she's welcome to answer that for you.
Okay, so it's not for the future, it's for what will happen in event when the...
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Zimmerman, I, I guess just to follow.
Before, before Mr. Silliman gets away from the microphone, just, so you, you said we've done this in other situations.
That's correct.
So, a- as you know, I live near the intersection of 22 and Chlor Lane.
Yes.
And however many years ago, when Brentwood was approved, there was a donation made for a roadway improvement there.
Correct.
And we just had a meeting to talk about what we're going to do with that intersection, right?
Right, so...
And we've been sitting on that money for 15 years, probably?
Uh, I think since 2006, maybe? Yeah. In, in, in that case, what you're referring to is there was around $360,000 uh, contributed for future improvements and this was associated with the Brentwood development. Um, and now that we are working with KYTC on a improvement of Highway 22 and Chlor Lane, that whole intersection, that, that money will be used as our match towards that federal aid project, which is an 80/20 project.
And it was never expected it was going to take this long, but I mean, thi- this is somewhat akin to what you're talking about here.
That's correct. And in the case with, with Independence Village, um, that's the apartments opposite the Oldham County Health Department that were approved uh, fairly recently in the last few years and 75,000 was contributed towards road improvements. Again, that's in the City of La Grange and the City of La Grange is using a portion of that to pay for um, their half of the Commerce Parkway traffic study because we're involved in this traffic study with a 50/50 cost share with the city, county city. So that one's getting utilized partially now.
I, I didn't sit on the planning commission when Brentwood was built. But I would say that subdivision is phased-in building. This is going to accommodate where she's hoping that she'll get 150 people in her facility as soon as it's built. Not a phased-in process where she's going to say, I'm going to only allow 10 people come in at a time. So I, that's the only difference I see in, in that different comparison.
In the timing.
In timing, yeah. So anyway, Ms. Zimmerman, I mean, you, you did the analysis and you, you found that it was warranted for the left lane. I know you got, you need to be sworn in.
I was sworn in, but I'd need to, and, uh, give my name and address for the record. Diane Zimmerman, 12803 High Meadows Pike, Prospect, 40059. Are you finished with your question?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So yes, I did the analysis and I, what I want to circle back to is the road capacity standards in your zoning ordinance and your subdivision regs that say mitigation is required at level of service D.
Right.
So if I look at the level service chart in my report in 2025, there are no Ds on the chart at any location.
Right.
So I think the question has to become, what is a reasonable and proportional share for this development? The capacity standards do not mention the left turn warrant allowance analysis. They uh, don't reference that in any way, shape, or form. Those are intended to be used for new construction. I mean, we've had this conversation multiple times in the last five years about the difference between uh, an existing intersection and a new intersection. And the reason being is because a new intersection, you have the assumption that you have access to right-of-way. And so that's why the left turn warrants um, are, are intended to be applied only for new construction. So we, we kind of are caught, you all are caught in this kind of, where, where is the fair place to be of, it's not a, a requirement because it does not meet the, the level service D in the road capacity standards. What is the proportional share that this development should, should contribute to a future construction for improvement of, of the intersection?
I understand your conclusion of that. It's just that when you write something...
Yes.
That says there will be an impact to the existing highway network.
Well, sure, there will be an impact. I mean, would you prefer, you start using marginal slight?
No.
Right? I mean, I, I'm caught on what to describe it.
That's why I respect your honesty and integrity in putting that in there.
Sure.
Because you did state that turn lane volume warranted for Friday with drive-in event center, left turn lane warranted.
Yes.
So that's what we were working on here.
Yes, yes, yes.
And there was a proposal by the county engineer and the applicant. It's just that now it's leaving it up to the commissioners to determine, which I've never said like that before, to say which is fair and which is reasonable.
Right. And in the other cases that I've worked with, uh, Mr. Baxter, where we made a contribution, I mean, I was involved with both Brentwood and Paramount, it was um, a determin- both of those, I believe, were level of service D, so they were required, so they, their, their share of what would be required would be different.
So in your testimony, let's just say, well, I'm not going to do ifs. If the event center was built, what would change the level of service if there was no left turn lane based on that?
Additional traffic, exit, the level of service at this intersection would be impacted by additional traffic on DW Griffith, which would be from the additional businesses that could locate on those undeveloped parcels.
Could that decrease that level of service to D?
It could, once those developments are active.
That's what we're trying to get to.
Exactly.
Are we building for the future?
Right.
Our infrastructure or are we just going to do the same level of service?
Sure.
I, I appreciate your honesty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional? All right, further questions? Mr. Falvey.
Mr. Silliman. Where you determined this $50,000 number, where'd that come from?
So I took the area of the, the turn lane, the taper and what's, what's called the approach. So basically the geometry, geometry of the turn lane, adding that in there and then multiply that by the asphalt and the, the construction materials required. Then also, if you consider, you, again, we'd have to, you'd have to add in um, relocation of the trail. So, so just those construction materials, I think I computed it about 26,000 for just that turn lane portion, but then you've got, when you, when you build a construction project, you've got mobilization, demobilization, maintenance of traffic, other incidentals, there's other, some other construction, like I said, movement of the trail, so that's why I say 50,000 is an approximate number for construction. If I were to... why I say 50,000 is an approximate number for construction, if I were to, if I were to throw out a cursory cost opinion. But, but again, in, in what we're talking about, that's the full construction of that turn lane.
But you're not saying that they should be responsible for the whole thing, right?
I'm, I'm not saying either, correct. I'm, I'm telling you that it appears the cost of that turn lane might be around $50,000.
And the, I don't think it's labeled, but the site next to it, which is a bigger site, is also going to be on this road at some point, have access to this road. So in other words...
Unless they were to access off Commerce Parkway?
Yeah. We're talking a lot in futures, but it, it seems like they would have to share in the cost, too, since they're going to be right off the cul-de-sac.
Well, depending, depending on their potential traffic generation, we would have to do a traffic study at that time.
But if a left lane was already there, they skate by.
Unless it had to be lengthened. You know, the, the length I base this geometry on was a, a length that myself and the engineer discussed.
So we've got a lot of ifs and buts, and we don't know what's going to happen, but...
Always with future, correct.
Right. But I think fairness has to come into play, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Falvey. Further questions? Mr. Hampton, we'll get right to you, Ms. Kraus.
I'm a little confused on these proposed amounts for improvements. Maybe I've slept through these, I don't know, which is very possible. But is, is this part of our job on this type of thing? I mean, it seems sort of random to me as opposed to more specific. I don't know if I'm making myself clear or not. I hope I am, but I, I, I'm, I'm just not, I don't, I don't get, I know you can throw out these numbers, but we really don't know if it's 20, 40. I mean, we're just, and, and is that our job? I'm just trying to understand.
Let me state it differently. Is it within your scope of authority, is really, I think, one of the questions?
There you go.
Okay. So, Mr. Baxter, opinion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think roadway capacity is one of the capacity standards. So, you know, I mean, you, you all consider things like school capacity and those types of things all the time. So I think it is within your all's scope. I mean, for example, a condition of approval could be that an acceptable contribution be determined between the applicant and staff at the, you know, before the record plat, I guess it's a record plat, you got to have a...
Well, this one wouldn't go to record plat, so I'd say probably prior to...
It did, you, you could do that at construction plan approval.
Yeah.
Mr. Baxter, I would, I would ask, though, is that, is that the scope of the county engineer or the planning department to establish that amount? Again, I, I think it's my, my job is telling you, this is what I think it costs to build that, and the, the applicant's saying, well, they want to provide a percentage. I, I don't know that it's my position to come up with that number or that percentage.
I think that goes to the concern, and I don't know who raised the concern, that that wasn't worked out before we got here.
In answering Commissioner Hampton's question, I mean, this doesn't happen in every single case that comes before you, but as, as growth in the county outpaces infrastructure, you know, in, in any type of capacity, and that's exactly what, you know, Mr. Baxter mentioned, school capacity, to ensure that we don't have overcrowded schools, we provide a number that the school board has given us, and we incorporate that within binding elements, is that in certain cases, we have seen, whether it's, and most of the time it's subdivisions come through that have to put up money. And I just, you know, sitting up here, looked back, Brentwood back in '08 agreed to provide $345,000 to the county. Now granted, there's a lot of improvements there and a lot of build-out and a lot of homes. Looking back at 2017, when the drive-in was approved for a development plan, there wasn't any money set in there, but it did state, I guess there was a phase two that was scheduled to be part of the drive-in and maybe, and/or track two and three, and if that came back, that was going to have to have an updated traffic analysis to determine those impacts. So that potentially, based on further development of the drive-in, if and when that ever happens, they could potentially, you know, be put into that. And then, the most recent one was in '22, when you all heard Paramount states, they had agreed to contribute $50,000 towards off-site road improvements for traffic infrastructure, and that was, that was really at the US 42 Lock Lane intersection for potential, you know, down the road, off-site improvement. So it, it doesn't happen all the time, and I guess we really don't have a rhyme or reason to that number, and we, we rely on, on Mr. Solomon to kind of give us an idea of how much that would cost. And, but most of the time, that does get incorporated into a binding element, so that then they can be held to that at some point, whether that's record plat or, in this case, before construction plan approval, so that we have an amount, so.
I certainly believe in being forward on infrastructure. I think it's too many times we get the cart before the horse, and that's not what I'm implying at all. I'm, my only, and I'm not, whatever the number is, I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning the process and how does, how do we do this in an equitable manner when it seems like we're kind of shotgunting a little bit, that's all.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Hampton?
No, thanks.
All right. Ms. Kraus, you're up next.
Is your proposed estimate of the cost that's based on current construction cost? Not future construction cost?
Oh, no.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Douglas?
I don't want to lose sight of what my forward thinking is, but what's before us today is a, an event center being put in, being built, not phased in, and it wouldn't be any different than any other commercial building coming in and saying that the level of service is, meets the standards. However, due to the fact that we're building this, it's going to decrease that level of service. And if someone says it warrants, it wouldn't be any different than, say, we sit here and approve not too long ago, a commercial building down the street, big grocery store, and it was agreed upon then by the applicants, by the county, a left turn lane or a right turn lane was warranted, correct, Mr. Solomon?
Well, they agreed to a traffic signal.
Exactly, but...
And associated turn lanes.
There was associated turn lanes also for there, so to enter the, off of Commerce Parkway. So I guess the thing is, is that, you know, like Mr. Hampton said, it kind of puts us in an awkward situation, like our attorney says, the applicant and the county has not come to an agreed amount. So I think that's the first time this body has ever faced that. Usually, it's already agreed upon. So I don't know, will we take a recess?
Just a minute. So I've got a couple more questions coming. Mr. Marsh?
Possibly for Mr. Solomon and Mr. Fisher. But would a binding element be something like a traffic mitigation plan to be implemented per left turn concerns with financial support from the applicant to be negotiated with the planning and zoning staff? Would that be an acceptable way to address this?
Yes, except I think Mr. Solomon's concern is, you know, can we get there? So I, I think maybe a brief recess to allow the applicant to discuss this and with the engineers to see if we can come to some kind of understanding, because it's a, going to be left in a situation where they get an approval that gets denied later because we can't come to an understanding.
All right. Short recess.